Be able to pull that off. It was a good reminder. We may be able to pull it off, but again, keep in mind that with the in-person meetings, it's going to be a combination of a bigger group and a discussion and an informal. It's not going to be like a council or a commission meeting where people come to the dais. They're not going to come up to the microphone. It's going to be more like popcorn going off in the room. And then we're going to break up into working groups. So I think that the recording would would really not capture the essence of the meeting, I'm afraid. And because logistically, we just aren't set up, I don't think we're going to be able to have a valuable recording of that setting.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. So what we're hearing is with no more hands up, what we're hearing is we'll hold back doing any more virtual meetings. And if we're feeling like we haven't learned enough from the community by June 11th, then we're going to have to regroup because we are on a relatively aggressive schedule. And so we may have to continue outreach as we start producing elements. And that's always an option, too.
Did I hear you say that you would? How are you going to advertise these two dates so that you'll get some good attendance?
We're going to use the same venues that we have. We've pretty much pulled out all the stops that we know how to, which is social media through city, through police, through fire, the website. We'll ask the Beacon to run an article. The social media seems to get a good bounce among the community. So it seems to get shared and reshared. So that's maybe one of the more effective ways.
Are you doing Nextdoor?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, and I would recommend. I mean, I assume there's a little bit of budget. It would seem to me that if we could take, not do a full-page ad, but maybe do a half-page article about what the general plan means for the city and the citizens, and then maybe run a more simple ad at the bottom to really get people's attention. It's a small price to pay, I think.
I would agree. Needs to be laid out kind of like an ad with some bullet points about what the general plan, what we're trying to do.
Needs to be on the front page.
That'd be nice.
Yeah. I'm not sure where our survey was published in the Beacon, but we did not receive a single completed survey from our publication of the survey in the Beacon. So I'm not sure where it was placed. I didn't actually see how it looked, but that didn't turn out to get us much bang. So.
Yeah. I think from, I think from a marketing perspective, it's all about saturation. We just want to saturate the market and keep telling them, hey, this is important, this is important. And then finally they'll, they'll break down and do it.
Okay. We will work on that.
And maybe we need some follow-up reminders, not just the first time, but maybe a couple other times as the dates get closer, too. Because sometimes if it's not in front of people's faces, they forget about it.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's really very easy to accomplish on Nextdoor and social media. And we have an incredible member of the general plan working group who puts up posters like nobody's business. So we'll, we'll ask Art if he wants to help out again. So I think that, you know, every way we can get it out there, from posters in shop windows to, we'll do the little cards again. We'll.
Put something out at Lira's. Everybody goes to Lira's and the, you know, places.
Okay. So we'll, we'll push all those venues out again. Hopefully, we'll, we'll see better attendance at this one.
You still thinking of sending something to kids at school that they would take home to their parents?
You know what? I've done that before. You have to publish it in two languages. You have to have enough for every student in the whole district. It's a big deal to do that. So I don't know whether you want to go there or not with kids. And then how many of them actually get, make their way home?
I thought we were going to put something in the water bill. Whatever happened with that? We decided not to do it, or it didn't work out? Can we stuff those envelopes with a paper survey?
We will have to check on the timing for any notification for this meeting. We'll see where we stand on that. So, but surveys through the water bill, and if we could get invites also.
At least mention it in the bill.
And then also, I was going to recommend that maybe short of going to the entire school district, we could go through some of the student organizations and get them to kind of champion it and then hand out the surveys. I mean, certain kid, other kids sending, giving it to other kids is important as I, I mean, it's going to get more traction, I think, than if a parent is just saying, hey, go do this survey. I think you're also trying to reach parents of the kids, but then also we had talked about kids participating as well, right?
Okay. All right. Well, we'll, we'll do everything we can to get the word out, and hopefully we'll, we'll see more, more folks show up in person at the meetings.
Let me get this off the screen. This, the meeting is being recorded.
You have to click and say okay.
I can't click because I don't have anything to click on. Oh, whoever's sharing the screen. There we go. Thank you.
Is the, the announcement's off, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Nick, let's, why don't you share a little bit about the upcoming meetings?
Okay. So the meeting will be about an hour and a half to two hours long. We'll give a brief overview of the general plan process, the timeline for completion, and why we're going through the general plan process and updating the Rio Vista plan. We'll give an intro to general plans in general, the content purpose, and just some of the basics about general plans. And then we'll have a Q and A session after we present that material to get questions and to respond to people's questions and comments during the meeting. Then we'll have some time during the meeting to go over the community surveys and really have a little bit of time for the people to take the surveys while they're there, participate in completing the surveys. It should only take them about five minutes to complete. That way, we can ensure that they are filled out there at the meeting, and we can collect them at the meeting. In terms of the breakout table exercise, we'd like to have aerial maps of the city where people can, you know, put a sticker, a little dot where they live. They can also provide input on key community features that they enjoy visiting, that they think are key assets in the community, such as a park or a downtown area or a building, a restaurant. So those key inputs on community features during that meeting, as well as a couple of other things as well, like mobility, to get ideas on how to improve circulation, maybe expand bike lanes or other mobility features for cars, bikes, and pedestrians. And we also want to look at parks and recreation, so how we can increase opportunities for open space and recreation. So those are the three kind of topic areas in terms of key community features, mobility, and open space in parks. But we do want to get your thoughts tonight about anything else we may want to talk about during those breakout tables, or types of issues or themes that we may want to.
So we're really, we're right now focusing on these, you know, are these the three things that make the most sense at this point? And again, key community features might be, you know, tell us what is a really significant place in Rio Vista for you? And it's, it may be downtown, it may be someone's school, it may be the cemetery. I, I don't know. Where, it'll be interesting when over a body of people, a group of people, we start to see the places that are really special in Rio Vista to community members. So that's the idea on that one. Mobility, well, we know, we know there's issues. There, there's obviously the Highway 12 issue. We're really interested in this exercise to, what are the problems of getting around? We've, we've heard generally that, you know, getting across town in the morning or in the afternoon is a real problem because of Highway 12. If we could dial in a little bit closer, like where are people really running into trouble spots? Like, I think church in 12 is going to rise up. It's going to be a very obvious problem intersection, but what are the other ones? There's, there's going to be more that we're looking for. In mobility, we're also looking to get people to start dreaming about what would be good ways to get around as a bicyclist and a pedestrian. So this is really starting a discussion that will then lead into our circulation and mobility element, and it will cover cars, bikes, and pets. The third subject area, and these are each going to be vignettes, where maybe we'll pull out a separate sheet of paper. The third one is parks and recreation. Is that really worthy of being the third one? Or is there another topic that really feels more important to test with the residents? What's, what's the next thing after, you know, your sacred spaces in the community? What makes Rio Vista, Rio Vista? Then your mobility? How do you get around in Rio Vista? What's, what's the third most important thing that you'd like to test with this community?
I would say on the economic, economic development side, we'd want to hear what types of businesses, what types of activity they like to see down here in the downtown core.
Another one's probably public safety as well.
Edwin, can you, can you clarify a little bit? Are you talking what kinds of stores? Are you talking what kind of events? Are you talking?
I mean, it's going to come up. I mean, right now, we're working on the, having an economic development person come in and do a SWOT analysis on the city. They're going to ask, well, what types of businesses are here? What types of businesses are people interested in? And then, of course, they're going to do their economic analysis and tell us what they think are going to be best. But that is one of the first things that always comes up in conversations that I have with people. It's like, oh, why don't we have, I'm making it up right now, but why don't we have a bowling alley like we had before? Things like that.
Okay.
That's how give us insight into the types of activities people want to see.
Okay. Thanks. And Walt, I think you, I think you started to share something else?
Yeah, of public safety. I mean, that seems to come up more often than not lately, so that definitely is a topic we should cover.
What if, give me a little better understanding of public safety. Is that a concern that there's crime in the community? Is that?
Well, what was brought up at the last city council meeting, which was Tuesday this week, was the second firehouse that we should have. At least that's what everyone's talking about. And it's, it's the, the times that it takes the fire department to actually go from point A to point B. And their times are a little bit off right now, and we think that possibly that second fire station would help. I mean, we do have an aging community, so they need to get medical attention fairly quickly. I don't know about the crime issue, that, that's something that probably could be brought up, too, but that doesn't seem to be, you know, a really big topic at this point, at least.
No, and I, yeah, certainly that Tuesday's meeting, that was both community members coming forward and encouraging the council on that issue, but then also the project we reviewed, it came up again. So, yeah. Other thoughts? Other really important things to discuss with the community? Mary Ellen?
I don't see anything here about the, the river. It seems to me that, you know, people continually say, yeah, but there's, you know, how, how do we get to the river? What can we do? Can we view it? Can we? And they're concerned that there's all this stuff around River Road, you know, how come there's not hotels here? And I always say, oh, it's because it's zoned industrial and business. And so I think there, I think there needs to be something that allows some category here that allows people to give you their input on that. Are you looking for input? Are you looking for ideas here?
In this conversation right now, I'm looking for guidance from the working group.
At this meeting that you're coming, that community.
Absolutely. Looking, looking for ideas and input.
I see.
What we're really trying to do in, in this, in this input outreach effort, we're really trying to identify those things that are most important to the community, to the residents. We're trying to identify those areas where we should really spend our time in the general plan. We'll, you know, of course, time is the limited commodity, and we want to make sure we spend the right amount of time on key items. If economic development is a really key item, we want to make sure we protect and, and give enough time to that topic. So that's, that's really what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay. And, and secondly, I heard you talking about, you know, the highway and what, where the crossings would be. And I mean, you're aware that Caltrans has already pretty much made a plan for how it's going to be in 2025?
Yeah. I'm also aware that it's inadequate. That Caltrans improvements is part of the solution. It's a great part of the solution. It's a good addition, but it doesn't, you know, we, we really need to be thinking well beyond the 2025 horizon of what Caltrans now has planned.
About what could happen, what they could do, you mean?
No, it's, it's really more about what can we do? We're never going to tell Caltrans exactly how to design a highway. You know, we, we can encourage and ask, but ultimately, that's their road. We, we control the local roads. We can improve intersections. We can talk about non-vehicular routes. There's a lot we can do in the fabric of the community around the highway, even if we can't fundamentally change the highway.
I see. Okay.
Hey, Paul. One other thing, and this falls under either Parks and Rec or Economic Development, but we, and I know this will be heavily discussed, but we recently, you know, dissolved the Army Base Steering Committee. And so I think that needs to be a major emphasis of any general plan discussion.
Army base reuse in general? Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Would that rise to the level of making that, you know? I mean, that would kind of tick the checkmark by Mary Ellen's comment about access to the river. It would touch on recreation. It's a place where we could do something. This, maybe that's one of the big items is, you know, give us your thoughts on the Army Base. What, how, how could it best add to the community?
I, I would say that 95% of the people that will be at these meetings will say, where's the Army Base?
Really?
They don't even know where it is. Most people don't.
Interesting.
You know where it is, Nick?
I've walked it.
Okay. All right.
I've walked those lovely buildings.
Okay. Well, I'm glad they introduced you to it.
Yeah. No, I wanted to see it. Okay.
Question, question comment, really, regarding the breakout tables, because from my experience, it seems that even if you come to a breakout table or you come up with an agenda for something, it tends to be free-flowing, meaning, for instance, the Caltrans came out here to talk about the highway, and the conversation quickly devolved into Sassoon City to Highway 113 and the traffic out there and the potholes. I mean, is there flexibility? I know that you have specific topics that you want to guide to, but, you know, there may be some other discussion points that come out of this that may be, you know, things that we didn't think about here, actually. And so I wouldn't want it to be so rigid that I say, no, you're off topic. Let's come back to Parks and Rec, for instance. Is there, I'm, you guys are experienced at this, so.
Absolutely, Edwin. No, I've actually been in facilitated discussions where the facilitator was more concerned about his or her agenda than actually listening to people. We're not going to do that. So we'll, we'll see where the conversation goes, and we'll, we'll glean whatever folks want to share with us. And, you know, we'll, we'll provide a structure and we'll set the table for a discussion. We'll, we'll see what everybody brings to the table.
Thank you.
All right.
Paul, before you go any further, you probably can't see the people in the audience, but we have a former mayor and two former vice mayors. I don't know whether they have any opinions on things, but they've been around a while, and it might be good to hear from them. So if any of you want to get up and speak and give us your two cents, we'd appreciate it.
Is there possibly a mic so that I will be able to hear? Great. Great.
I'm in agreement with a lot of what you're talking about.
Is the mic on? Is it?
It's working. Oh.
Okay. You have to talk.
I'm in agreement with a lot of what, what has been said by everyone here. What I'm looking at, though, and our biggest problem for years has been Highway 12. We're not going to change the mindset of the state. The state has their own, their own plans that they want, and we're going to be stuck with that. One of the problems you're saying is you're saying, what do you want to do in this city? I would love to come down into the core. I live in Trilogy. I would love to come down to the core of the city more often, but 2:00 this afternoon, traffic was back to pass Somerset on 12. The only way down was airport. Airport was blocked with cars also. So what we're doing is we're playing a game of, should we move this to this and this to this? And unless we come up with a better solution for 12, we're still going to have problems throughout the city. So that's our advice.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, Highway 12 is going to continue to be a problem until it's a four-lane highway, and that may not be in any, any of our lifetimes. However, some planning for it might be in order. A couple of things. I don't know that healthcare concerns are part of the general plan, but they're part of my general plan. And one of the things that I'd like you to take a look at is the concept of a health facilities district. The reason I say that is because one of the difficulties with getting healthcare in Rio Vista is we have too many players in the game. We've got people that go to Sutter. We've got people that go to North Bay. We've got people that go to Kaiser. We've got people who are tied in with, with the hospital in Lodi. And there's no way to bring all that together, and nobody feels that they can set up something and get enough people to make it worth their while. But if we had a health facilities district that set up a building through a bond or whatever, which provided for a common waiting room and several different office setups, like maybe two exam rooms here, two there, two there, whatever. One of them is for Kaiser. They don't have to use it every day, Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever. One for the health department for people who are on Medicare. One for Sutter, maybe they use it one or two days a week, but they have their own place. And then the facilities district could provide in the same site, x-ray at a price to these people, lab, so they get into the lab if they need it. And the, the backup, the maintenance and the x-ray lab, et cetera, would be covered by the district, not by the individuals. So we can provide them with a relatively low rent. They wouldn't have to make major investments. I worked for, well, Jim helped me, but I worked for a couple of years with several people trying to get Lodi to come in here because they were doing clinics to feed into their hospital. We got to the point where I actually had a doctor that it took around to show him housing because he was going to move in. And then they decided not to do it because the upfront cost was just too high. And that's going to happen right now. It's happening with, with Kaiser. They'd rather bring a bus in here than put the money out for a facility. So I think that's one thing we should consider. Maybe that's not part of the general plan. I don't know. But it's something that's part of, in my mind. Another thing on a long-term basis that I'd like to see looked at is there's going to be a four-lane highway coming through here sometime. Maybe not in our lifetime, but it's going to happen because I would guess that Highway 12 between Highway 80 and Highway 5 is probably the busiest road in Northern California. That's not a freeway. And it just can't continue that way, no matter what they do. However, if they fix it, it's going to crumble again because they're not really putting in a good solid road. So one of the things that then happens is you have the question of, do we go three miles south of, of Rio Vista or three miles north of Rio Vista or down Church Road or whatever? And that's been discussed many times. I proposed something eight years ago, which got very little traction, but it's something I'd like you to give some thought to, and that is that if we had a four-lane highway coming through here and we could tell the state what we want when they finally do it, I'd like to see a split four-lane highway with two lanes, one each way, coming through town, and another one going around town through the, that open area by Sino and stuff. It comes right on through to the river. There's an open area that's useless for anything. It's between the business park and downtown. How do we link downtown with this if you have a long high bridge going up over the river? Your vision came up with an idea that apparently they've done successfully in New Jersey, New York, and so on. And some of those rivers where there's not enough room to make long, steep climbs, they do a corkscrew to get up. And you can take the one going through town, corkscrew that up to the bridge, whereas the other part of the bridge goes right on up, and all the trucks and all the other stuff could stop going through downtown and go right around us if they're not in, coming into town. But people that wanted to come through town, either direction, could come down and do it. Anyway, that's a thought. I have, which I will leave here, some, some conceptual ideas of what these things look like. I will leave them for you.
If you could leave those with Christine Ball, that would be much appreciated.
I'm, otherwise business, we need a hotel. The point, the point right now is a very nice spot where they have RVs right on the water. Be a nice footprint for a hotel, and they could take the other RV spots and the boat stuff around there and make it more parking. So we need a developer to really come in and spend some time. And if we develop the Army Base, it's going to bring in a lot of high-powered people who will want hotels to stay at unless they move here, which they probably won't want to do for the most part. So they're going to want to stay at some nice place. So the Army Base may be the key. And as long as we have a Democratic congressman from our district, we're not going to get much help from a Republican administration. So I would hope you guys would push on that now, because if the Republicans take over, we're going to sit for four more years until we get another Democrat in, unless, of course, you develop, you know, we elected Republican congressmen. I don't know. So, but push on the Army Base. That's important.
Thank you, Dave.
Isn't the Army Base only, it's, you implied that people would come in to develop it? Doesn't it have a very narrow parameter of what it can be?
A significant part of the plan, I won't bore you too long, but a significant part of the plan for the Army Base is both a federal fisheries program and a relocation of virtually all of the Delta area state water resources dedicated to the Delta and water conservation and so on, all in one place. And that would be the place. Okay? So we're talking about a lot of PhDs, a lot of high-powered people all working out of this one place instead of spread around like they are now. So that's why that would put a lot of pressure. If we get that developed, it'd put a lot of pressure for somebody to say, yeah, we better put a hotel in here because we got people demanding it.
Thank you, Dave. Eddie, you're up.
Thank you, Chairman, for sending me a message, inviting me to this meeting and notifying me of it. Been a long time since I've been in this room, and I'm not sure how to describe it, but I sat right where Mr. Okamura sat in 2001 and voted to approve the general plan. It was 2002, stated 2001, but that's wrong. We didn't approve it till 2002. And I've been through a lot of public information meetings. I mean, dozens upon dozens upon dozens. And I would just like to say that you already know the answers you're going to get. They don't change much. If you look in the guiding principles of Rio Vista and the general plan, you'll find you'll find most of the things were, which are suggested outcomes of these meetings. They don't change a lot. What, what is the obstacle to those, to these things happening? Well, if it wasn't for money, they would have all happened. But that is a problem. So I see the general plan as not so much a wish list of what people wish they could have. But it's more of a guiding constitution of what you can do and how you do it. It's, it's like the constitution we have in the country. It's the rules and regulations. And those are the boundaries and you work within those boundaries. So I think a bigger question to me is not so much, I mean, it's important for the public comment. Don't get me wrong there. That's exactly the right thing to do. But I think in your minds, the questions would be, are there any changes? And if, and if not, why haven't the things that people have wanted for decades? Why haven't they happened? Are there obstacles in our general plan? They need to be looked at, they need to be changed, they need to be massaged. Have the times changed and what do we change? I think the general plan as a whole is a pretty good document. And I've been looking at it lately since I got your message and and I keep asking myself some of these questions. Well, these things were addressed 20 years ago. Why didn't they happen? I don't have those answers, but I think that's, in my opinion, that's the strong direction you need to move in this general plan update. Don't start necessarily with a blank piece of paper. What do we do to take what's there and make it work? Most of it works. Some of it doesn't. But anyway, God, I wish all the things that we wanted to do back in 2001, we could have already had done. And right, Mr. Donnelly, your name is on that first page of that document too, as chairman of the Planning Commission. So we'll talk tomorrow.
We had that big recession in 2008.
Pardon me?
The, the general plan, actually, I think it said it projected by now, we'd have 23,000 people in Rio Vista. And obviously that didn't happen. That's why a lot of those things didn't happen.
Yeah, some of it was obstacles, some of it was just economic times. It was never imagined that a lot of space in between. It was imagined that it kind of gradually be built out in that direction. But the economics changed. A lot of the developers in the middle did not execute their agreements. Trilogy did. And I did watch the previous meeting. I watched the reported thing and everything. One thing I noted in your consultant's comments about the demographics of the town and the age. Well, that, that development, the age restricted development, that's pretty much old. That's developed. So now you begin filling in the families and the younger demographics in between. So what do you do to make that happen? What do you make it better for those developers to go out and move forward? And to create the economy, to create the jobs, to create the money. Job, people are working in town. They spend their money in town and they support businesses. They spend it out of town. Nobody wants to come back to the rest. I, I think I've probably gone beyond the scope of what you asked me to do, Chairman.
I expected it, but thank you.
I don't mean to say that it's not. I mean, it's extremely important. How do we? How do we? Just to the same point we're at right now.
And I think you brought up a really good point, which I'm going to keep in mind. There should almost be some sort of weighted average or something. When you think about the plan development out here, we obviously Trilogy is completely built out now. That represents half the population at this point in time. And we have a little piece out at Liberty Island, which is 55 plus as well. So there is a large percentage, but it is going to be changing. And those people aren't here yet. So when we put 850 new homes out at the Brand Ranch and Sino actually develops, those are going to be younger people. And so if we put too much weight on the 55 plus community, we're going to be, our general plan's going to be out of whack within 10 years, right? Or less, or less, if we don't kind of take that into, into consideration. So that's a good thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. Hey, Paul. Thank you.
Great discussion. Thank you for, for inviting these, these gentlemen with, with such wonderful knowledge to share. And that, that was a lot of notes that I know Nick and Eunice and I all took down. Nick, I think we were pretty much through this discussion, so I'm going to move on to the next slide. And can you give a little update of what we've heard so far?
Yes. So in terms of K input to date, we had about 20 people, a little over 20 people at the first in March, attending virtually in the community meetings. Public input website, we've had items, comments general plan and, and some of their thoughts. And then people responding to those comments and suggestions. And then we've had 50 participants take the survey, which includes committee members and the general plan working group members. In terms of paper surveys, we have distributed those throughout the community. We've had about 19 filled out to date, but we do expect to get more out into the community at events and then through the next community meetings, we'll definitely be getting, you know, upwards, hopefully of 100 or more over the next few months. And then Paul attended the Rotary meeting last week, last Friday, giving an overview of the general plan in a presentation and had over 20 attendees attend that meeting and had a lot of great interactions and questions. Paul, you may want to elaborate on that a little more.
Yeah, Rotary meeting was great. I wish we could have had an hour and a half instead of 30 minutes to talk about the general plan, but whatever. It was, it was a good discussion and we did find that with putting the surveys right in front of people in a meeting, our, our catch rate was much higher. So that was, that was very good. I, I have learned that SerOptimus has programmed out their speakers until their summer break. So I won't be able to make SerOptimus until September. I'll head out there then. I think Lions is still, we're still trying to connect with Lions and figure out how that would work. So we'll continue to try to go out to community meetings and community groups. And, and if you keep feeding me groups of 10 to 15, maybe 20 people, I'm happy to go out and do a brief presentation, share about the general plan, hopefully get people engaged a bit more. And we'll, we'll keep working on, on that level as well. So at this point, we're going to move on to the next subject. And what we want to do is talk about really what we'll be undertaking here for, you know, pretty much the next year. And this is a fairly fast, a fairly aggressive timeframe that we're going to be looking at. But our, our initial efforts were really just collecting background documents, getting consultants aligned, getting the working group established and getting started. That was, you know, really up until about January. We've been in a process of community participation and, and really input. That's going to continue through June with the meetings. We'll, we'll see how much input we're, we're able to get. And if we feel like it's a good representation and a good basis to guide our efforts. But we'll regroup after those June meetings and make that decision. Our expectation is we at InterWest, our team is going to start drafting vision statements and goals. And we're going to want to feed those back to you and hear if we're really understanding the community. And of course, as, as one of the speakers noted, there's a lot of great material in the current general plan. We're by no means throwing it out. What we're doing is testing, improving, making it relevant for 2022 and beyond. From there, we're really going to start preparing draft elements and bringing those back. We'll talk a little bit more about the schedule in a, in a later slide. And then what we're, what we're looking at is a plan adoption that's about a year out from now. You know, we could be in Planning Commission hearings in about a year. So we're, we don't want to overthink the general plan. We don't want to rush it too quickly, but there, there's a a fair number of issues that are somewhat understood. There's a lot of preferences that I think will be reflected in the 20, in the 2001 general plan and will, I think at the end of the day, we're going to validate a lot of that. And then we're going to learn that there's some new issues. And, and there are some new issues that were completely unknown. In 2001, there was environmental issues. There's some land ownership issues around us that are a huge mover that we're going to need to talk about. It may well be that Rio Vista will never become as big of a city as was envisioned in the 2001 plan because of land ownership that's starting to contain the city. So we'll go over that and, you know, we, we probably need to be realistic about what size of city we're planning for. And that's going to be a little bit different than the 2001 plan when there was lots of space for us to grow into. So certainly some things have changed, but there's, there's a lot that's understood about the community. And I think, I think that the, the comment, well, if we look at the 2001 general plan and it really captures what we want it to be, why haven't we achieved that? And that's going to be a really interesting discussion to see what can we do to bring about change and not just have a wonderful vision. So we'll, we'll be talking about that through the implementation programs of certain key elements.
Hey, Paul, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You'd mentioned earlier that the housing element needs to go on an accelerated pace to deal with some state deadlines. Just wanted to kind of know how that's going to work in relation to the rest of this.
Placeworks is preparing the housing element. Spoke with them today. Actually got my monthly update. We're right now working on the housing needs assessment. That's a, a component of the housing element. They're going to be having additional community meetings for, for the housing element. But we'll probably see a, a draft of the housing element from Placeworks in two to three months. So that element is going to be out in front of everything else we're doing. The housing element is by nature a formulaic document. We're, we're given a certain number of housing units that we have to accommodate. We have to demonstrate to the state how we can accommodate them. We have to show the programs that we're going to do to promote housing. And I think all of those programs are really going to be aligned with what we want to achieve, which is new housing development that can accommodate the natural growth of the community. And in particular, provide for younger families and younger households a place in, in Rio Vista. So those are all going to be goals of the housing element. But I think at this point, I'd like to ask the working group, how do you want to interact with Placeworks? Because they're, they feel their charge is to talk with housing providers, community members and people engaged in providing housing. We can also have them come to this group and provide a, a housing element presentation, housing element overview, go over the draft housing element. How, how do you guys want to interact on the housing element?
Yeah, I mean, I think
I'd like to see that.
Active involvement, you know, because it all has to interrelate. So, you know, we want to make sure we don't get ourselves into a box with the other parts of the general plan from things that are established in the housing element. So I'd, I'd like to have active involvement on our part.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think they need to come, give us a presentation at the very least.
And then I had a question. You had mentioned, Paul, about community, they're reaching out to the community. We haven't heard it, or at least I haven't heard anything about that. Are they, have they started that? Are they going to do it? And how are they going to do it?
So the housing elements, there, there was a decision made that the cities of Solana County and the county, with the exception of Fairfield, would pursue housing elements in a coordinated manner. Placeworks has been doing outreach meetings that aren't Rio Vista specific. They, they're larger meetings and for the most part, housing advocates have been more interested than community members. They have not done, you know, come to Rio Vista and hold a Rio Vista Town Hall. They have talked with organizations that provide services to disadvantaged groups. So they're, that's part of the housing element process. But it has not been a, a deep dive into trying to talk with residents. So the, the required housing element outreach is a little bit more focused on those organizations that provide services and promote housing within the community. So affordable housing developers, services to community members and such.
Yeah. I mean, I suspect there wouldn't be a whole lot of activity, but on the other hand, it seems like if you're doing it at the county level is what you're suggesting. The, on those arena numbers and whatnot, if they're going to do it, they should at least include us so that we could get the word out. It's, you know, citizens can choose whether they participate or not, but it seems like we've been left out.
I, I think we have actually been trying to push them, their, their meeting notices out, but maybe they're, they're kind of falling behind in, in background noise. But I'll check in with Jenny Gustalem. She's the project manager and a colleague and a friend of mine and ask her what she can do to make the housing element more visible in the community. And as well as coming and, and joining one of our meetings, she'll probably just sit in and join virtually. And I'm sure she'd be very happy to provide you an overview of the process. Ask when the working group would like to weigh in, what you want to weigh in on. But for, for those of you who haven't been through a housing element update, it's, it's a lot less fun than a regular general plan update. And what we're doing is kind of work. Housing elements are a different animal. So.
Yeah, I didn't suspect it was very sexy.
Well, you know, I would think general plan isn't really that sexy, but housing element somewhere down from that. But I will talk with Jenny. She's, you know, she's, she's wonderfully knowledgeable and would, I'm sure be very happy to, to speak with the group and then we can get a sense of how, how you'll be involved. And that may take the form of a meeting, you know, we, we don't anticipate having a June meeting. I, I think what we're, we'll talk about the schedule. So this, we may want to have a special meeting with Placeworks because their schedule is moving so fast and, and it will run right past us if, if we don't have that meeting soon. So I'll work on that.
Hey, Paul, has she reached out to anybody in the community like CARE or the Food Pantry in this aspect at all?
Yeah, that's, that's the type, well, she's attempted. I'm not sure about the Food Pantry, CARE. And there's an organization that assists in gap risk teams. I don't think ATOD, no. But there's a, there's a, a local organization in the community. The name's escaping me right now. We, we asked and were provided three organizations within the community that provide housing services and community services. And that's who she's attempted to contact. And she, she was able to reach two out of three.
If she needs help with that third one, let us know.
Well, we've tried. Rob's tried. I've tried. We've all left messages. So there's, I would have to find the organization, but they've, they've proved elusive. So. Big note, Jenny engaged with this group. And I'll, I'll also let you know, make sure that you're all aware of any future meetings of related to housing. Okay, so in a, in a perfect world, we'll be looking at starting hearings a little more than a year. a little more than a year from now. Well, we'll see how much we're able to stay on that pace. It's, it's a very fast pace. General plans are sometimes measured in multiple years. Some have even spanned close to a decade for a general plan update. So it's kind of like painting the Golden Gate Bridge. You get to one end and you have to go back and start over again. We think we can do it more quickly than that, but we want to make sure you all are comfortable with the product as we're going along. So the next thing we'd like to talk about is a little bit of a comparison of the current general plan and the structure of the general plan that we're envisioning and would like to talk to you about why we think this, this structure makes sense and get your input. On, on the left side is the elements of the current general plan. And on the right side is what we're, we think would be a logical arrangement. I, I'm going to start this discussion that as a practitioner, I like to be able to get to the answers in a policy document. And this is a policy document. First and foremost, this is a statement of how the city wants to see land used, how the city plans on providing infrastructure and facilities, how, you know, mobility, roads, trails will be constructed where they'll go. So that when a developer comes in, we, we have a plan. We know what we want to get to. As such, I, I, I have seen some plans that have very lengthy explanations of the process that plan development involved. And while that's, that's interesting and maybe, you know, a value in some way, it tends to create noise that, that blocks out what's really important that we're trying to accomplish something. We could talk about how many general plan working group meetings we held to prepare the general plan and how many community meetings. And we could have a long discussion of all of that, but at the end of the day, it does not in any way inform a decision by a particular developer, a staff member, a planning commissioner, or city council. What we want to get to is a document that's, you know, clear and concise and user friendly and not ambiguous. And those are really important to the development community. And they're really important to staff and decision makers that you don't, you don't look at a document and say, I'm not really sure what the answer is. That we, we do not want a general plan that leaves you feeling that. And, and right now there are aspects of our current general plan and, and our zoning that as, as, as a planner for the city, I look at and say, I don't know what the answer is. And so I'd, I'd, I'd like to not be in that position. I think you would like to have clearer directions. So that's kind of a preface that we're, we're anticipating a concise document that is clear, that, that we all know how to implement and, and not ambiguous. What we're proposing is starting out with a preface and introduction, really just a, a, a few pages. Talking about, you know, the general plan, its relationship to other documents like zoning, that any, anything that the reader really needs to understand, if we have specific plans, reference those and say, these are related documents, but really just a, a brief introduction to get, get the reader started. And then going into a chapter of community vision. And this is where we, we really start to establish what do we want to be when we grow up? What's, what is this, this city, Rio Vista, going to be as a community? What, what makes it special? What's important? Not a particularly long doc, chapter and a little bit softer in character. It's more descriptive. After that, we believe that a single land use and community design element could serve where currently we have a chapter that's planning constraints, land use and community character. And the, the land use and community design would really be the chapter you go to, to understand what development is supposed to look like in the city. So we, we think we can combine that together. It's, it's going to be a very important element in, in achieving the vision for Rio Vista. The, these next ones are really the same sections, but a little bit different sequence. Because following land use circulation is the biggest thing that we're regulating. Getting the roads right, getting the pathways, getting the bike ways, circulation and the way people move in the community affects people every day. Really important element. Then after circulation is economic development. Because that's really, you know, we, we've heard the council is very interested in economic development. How are we going to bring businesses to serve our residents? How are we going to bring services? Whether it's medical services or other types of services to town so that people don't have to go to Fairfield or Lowdy or wherever for, for these services. So economic development's going to be a big one and probably will have a lot to do with how we're going to incentivize the development we'd like to attract. The fifth element we're proposing is housing and, and as mentioned a little bit earlier, it's, it's really a very formulaic element. And it will establish how we're going to comply with, with housing law, but it, it may go a little bit further. It may describe the type of housing that, that we'd really like to see happen. But we'll, we'll work through that with Placeworks and make sure that they're incorporating your values to the extent that, that that's appropriate in the housing element. Okay, moving on. We think we can provide a recreation, open space and conservation element. Conservation elements for counties are really, really important because there's vast undeveloped lands. There's marshes, there's waters, there's agriculture. The city of Rio Vista, we think that your conservation, you know, one of the biggest issues will be water conservation. How are we going to conserve this, this very important resource? Recreation will be, you know, parks and, and to some extent, the programs associated with recreation. How is, how is the city going to foster and support the recreational needs of the community? And open space is a, a required element. It's a required discussion topic, but for, for a smaller community, we really don't have big open space areas that that are intended to be left as open space areas. There are some nice swales through town. There's some nice corridors. We'll look at those. The Brand Ranch Project was mentioned earlier. There's some, some creek beds and swales that move through there. So when we have those, what, what do we want those to look like? Do we want trails next to them? Things like that. All of that kind of folds together into recreation, open space and conservation. Public facilities and services, everything from police and fire to wastewater treatment plants to water plants. And libraries could fall into this category. So all of those services that the city needs to provide, all the facilities that you need to serve the residents. Safety and noise we're, we're proposing can be combined. Safety has changed a lot since two thousand and one. The catastrophic fires that we've seen across the state have led to a, a really a different emphasis on safety elements. And so now there's a lot of prescribed things that a safety element has to do. It has to talk about how we're going to create a community that's resilient to climate change. Um, that's a big new requirement. We, we have certain state reviews of the safety element. But we also think noise fits in nicely there. And we, we did adopt a noise ordinance for the city, um, probably six months ago or so. And that noise ordinance really started to define what's, what level of noise is okay and what's too much. But it was really felt as we went through that process, at least at the staff level, that when we get into the general plan, we'll do a deep dive into noise so we can understand noise in the context of Rio Vista, which is really different than, you know, every community is different. So we want to understand what are, what's your level of acceptance of noise? What's not appropriate? And that would go into a safety and noise element. And then finally, the state now requires something called an environment, environmental justice element, you know, sometimes be called EJ element. EJ is really trying to undo the wrongs that have occurred impacting disadvantaged communities. And this is really more a big city phenomena than a small town phenomena, but you know, sticking the factories in next to the poor folks. Wiping out a neighborhood with a highway or a rail and just driving it right through a neighborhood of disadvantaged people. And so that's why environmental justice has come forward is there are, you know, certainly in areas of the state, land use decisions have been made that have really hurt disadvantaged communities. And so we may need to do an environmental justice element. That is still under review and it's not actually a very easy answer. Because it has to do with whether we have a disadvantaged community census tract in the city of Rio Vista. And there is a census tract that's mostly in the county, but it extends into the city that includes a disadvantaged community. So right now we're still trying to figure out if we're going to have to address environmental justice. And if we will, how are we going to do that? We can either do it by weaving environmental justice policies into all the elements. So when we talk about where we do improvements, when we talk about how we build projects, we do it through a lens of environmental justice. That's probably how we'll do it versus having a separate standalone element. So, uh, finally, an appendix for implementation and we, we've found it's helpful to just, each of these elements is going to have goals, policies and programs. We've found it's helpful to just lift all of those out of the context of the discussion. So all of the technical discussion that may be in an element is important. But at the end of the day, having all of the policies and programs consolidated really helps with implementation. And so we would anticipate an appendix document bound into the general plan that would be implementation and policy summary. So that was a lot of me talking, um, got through it, but I really, we'd like to hear your thoughts. As you can see, we're, we're proposing that we may go down to eight or nine elements from the current thirteen. We think we can wind up with, with a document that's very clear and probably easier to, for the reader, for the developer, for the planning commissioner, city council member to, to understand and implement. Chair, I'm going to turn it over to you because I got to think there's a few questions at this point.
I don't know if we have any questions right at this moment, but I have a comment and this kind of isn't really my wheelhouse. It's more Edwin's. But it's branding. And I, I don't think that we as a city really know if we're agriculture, if we're recreation, if we're fishing community, if we're a boating community, are we a tourist destination? I think if we knew what that was, I think it would help us, you know, with a lot of these other elements. So I don't know if it's something that the city, city council, city staff can, can figure this out before this general plan, but I think it would really help us going for the, forward with a lot of these other things.
Yes, I'll chime in.
I wish you a warm up, Edwin.
Yeah, thank you. No, I, I don't, I haven't put a lot of thought into it other than I think that following the public comment or the, the citizens chime in, I think that that would be a good starting point for a project like that for sure. Um, I had a comment as well on not branding, but on the safety and noise, it seems like it's come before planning commission and the council numerous times about odor. And does that fall under safety and noise? And how is that incorporated? Because it might make it easier for planning commission to make decisions about businesses that come in where agricultural town. Obviously I'm talking more about cannabis, but is this where you'd put it or is that too specific?
I think probably we would maybe expand this to be health, safety and noise. Or, you know, something like that, but this would absolutely be the appropriate place. Odors are, you know, it, it's very similar to noise. It's a nuisance situation that needs to be regulated. And having some guidance on what the city's position is on how it's regulated is really helpful. So I think that this, this health and health, safety and, and noise could, could cover all of those subjects.
Thank you.
Uh, Lisa?
Um, I was wondering if the area being part of the national, that the delta as a national heritage area, if there were things that needed to be considered, um, if that drove some particular considerations of open spaces or use of the waterway, or even as you said, the conservation of water. And so it was just a general question.
Going to have to do a little research. Appreciate you bringing it up. Let us look into what that designation, I'm, I'm aware of a number of regulations related to preserving lands in the delta and waters of the delta, but not, not familiar with the her, national heritage designation, so.
Judith?
It seems like from the, the current plan to this one, you left out the planning constraints. I don't know what that is, but could you just let us know what that is and why it's okay to leave it off?
Planning constraints will be discussed in, in land use. I'm going to just throw the, the, the eight hundred pound grill out in case nobody's heard. There's a, a group called Flannery. I don't think Flannery is a person. Flannery is, is purchasing land around Rio Vista. And they are hemming us in. There's going to be very limited opportunities for Rio Vista to expand. That's a massive planning constraint. Water supply may be a planning constraint. We'll, we'll address that within the, um, public facilities and services. So we, we will pick up these constraints. We, we, I, I would even say that highway twelve traffic is something of a constraint that we need to, you know, be looking at. So we don't think that a separate chapter describing constraints is as productive as addressing the topics in the appropriate element where, where they're really going to be addressed. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Yes, thanks.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I'll just say, um, I like the, the new sequencing. I think it makes a little more sense than our current general plan. You know, after working on that a lot and looking at it after the fact, it did seem a little choppy kind of in how things flowed. So I, I really like the sequencing that you're proposing. It seems like it lays out the, uh, you know, the, the information better.
I just have one, one recommendation or one thought to maybe move safety and noise, flip it with public facilities, make it number seven so that you'd be coming off of housing, recreation, open space, conservation, and then you're going into safety and noise as, as would concern what it means to live here and make use, make use of land. I, I didn't know if that would actually read more smoothly since you were going to include environmental justice, which I really like that idea throughout all of the chapters. Rather than a standalone.
Yeah, you know, an interesting thing about general plans is we have complete latitude to arrange things the way we want. We don't even have to have elements. We can have one element as long as it addresses all the subjects. We've, we've all kind of adopted this practice of elements, but you know, the flow and the comment of where the safety element makes a lot of sense. And so we, we, we can, you know, for now we'll move it up. And as you start to see the document, you know, laying out, we may, we may still find other ways to consolidate or maybe separate items when we, if we feel like anything's too or maybe separate items when we, if we feel like anything's too unwieldy. But, you know, this is a starting place. And what's what's important for us is we need to start having a framework to hang the work that that InterWest is going to be doing. Pulling the good materials out of the current general plan and and finding where where those materials are going to hang in this this new order. So this, you know, this is not set in stone, but it is going to help us to start organizing and building these elements. Other comments?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, um. So Nick, I think you're back up, right?
Yes, I am. So here we have a slide of future general plan working group meetings moving forward. Um, we did go through the Microsoft phones. The meetings and then uh, going into preparing the general plan elements. We are thinking, you know, in terms of the meetings coming up, we're going to have meetings in June. Uh, the community meeting, so not having a general plan working group meeting in June. So we can prepare for the community and then come back in July uh, with the general plan working group to discuss the guiding principles and community vision. That we will be coming up with after we're hearing uh, comments and input from the community at the meetings. And also just taking into account all the public input we've received to date. We would then um, not have a meeting in August, but then go into September and we could come back to you and discuss some of the preliminary land use and circulation slash mobility. Principles and things that we've been looking at and ideas that we're generating regarding land use changes, things that should be modified, things that should be retained in terms of land use. Uh, designations and then also for circulation and mobility, some of the key things uh, that we've heard in summarizing those into uh, key themes and and key goals that we would like to move forward into uh, in writing the general plan element. So as we move forward in these meetings, we'll be uh, touching base with you on what we've been thinking about, what we're looking at in terms of goals and policies. And then quickly after that meeting, after we get your input, we can go into writing those elements in more detail and uh, developing those. We we're looking to have another meeting in November for discussing the economic development chapter and the public facilities and services chapter. Uh, discussing two elements uh, in that meeting. And then also looking at recreation, open space and conservation, as well as safety and noise um, in a December meeting. So we did discuss maybe moving, you know, a chapter around perhaps. So this may be fluid and we may modify this a bit. But generally, we're not looking to have a meeting necessarily every month. Um, we may be skipping some months so we can just really get to work, uh, thinking through the land use and circulation elements and the other elements as well. And so when we come to you, we're prepared to talk in a bit of detail about what we're thinking and what we're recommending in terms of these elements. And then for early next year in January, at the beginning of the year, looking at discussing the administration and implementation of the general plan document, and then we can also discuss any uh, questions or comments regarding any of the previous um, elements that we discussed in the previous meetings. So this is the proposed schedule. We just wanted to throw this out to you and and get your thoughts and ideas about this.
But let me ask a question. If we're not meeting in June or August of this year, does that throw any of our timelines off?
It's actually programmed in at this point of what we, how we see this rolling forward. And one caveat is we're going to try this. And let's say we go to our September meeting and we don't get through anything but land use. We're going to hold an extra meeting. So we we'll we'll see how how productive and how quickly we can move through the subjects. We just, you know, having to get materials to you really, you know, ten days in advance of these meetings. Um, if we're meeting every month, we're going to be finishing a meeting and already have something due for the next meeting practically. And so we're, we're going to get to a point where we can't turn out work fast enough and you might not be able to assimilate it fast enough. So we'll, we'll see how this this actually is going to work.
Mary Ellen? You're on mute.
Yes, um, is there a way to print out your little uh, screens that you have here? Because I've got notes all over the place. They're not making sense.
Yeah, how about if I send you the, we'll send out the PowerPoint to the, well, the PowerPoints do get posted on the website, right?
Oh, they do.
I believe they do.
Website.
RioVista2045.com, yeah.
Okay. All right, I can do that.
Yeah, and so we, but you know, if if, let me know if we we can also just email it to you, you know, if that's easier, so.
Yeah, that would be good. Email it to me. Thank you.
Lisa, did you have a question?
It was answered. I was just, I was going to inquire if we could get the written drafts before, um, because I would, I would be much, a much better participant if I'm going to have a little bit of a chance to process rather than reading as fast as I can and listening to an explanation uh, in order to get feedback. But it, but Paul answered it. He said he was anticipating maybe ten days before. So I will also then know when to look for that in the email, et cetera. So I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Doesn't look like we have any other questions or comments.
Okay, where are we at? Next steps. So we're um, we're going to be working hard to make those June meetings as productive as possible. I think we've let you all know about the active transportation plan meetings. My my general observation on the meetings that I've attended, which is both the active transportation plan as well as the highway twelve, complete highway discussion is they're they're good and important projects that are being looked at. But they are finite projects and they're not the whole picture. So we as a group are going to have to see the whole picture, not what's going into this funding cycle or this particular highway project. And we're going to need to be thinking down the road with 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 a much wider vision. So um, getting to those meetings, if if you can um, get to one of the active transportation plan meetings, it's it's really helpful. You'll learn what Public Works is planning and what's on the horizon. And then from there, we'll be talking about, okay, what, where are the gaps? Where do we fill in the rest? Um, we'll also impose on Robin Borey, our public works director, to provide a um, a description. And and, you know, I I realize that this, even this this note here, active transportation plan. The meetings have been about a funding cycle and a set of improvements. They don't touch on the entire citywide active transportation plan, which Salado Transportation Authority is working on right now. So we we really are going to need to pull together STA with our circulation consultant, Fair and Peers, and and have a really a holistic discussion about how people move in the community and what can we do to make it easier to get around in Rio Vista. So, um, but if you can get to those meetings, that would be great. Our our next general plan working group meeting, based on our kind of standard approach, would be um, July seventh. Is is that right? Wow, I wouldn't have known. Oh, my goodness. Um, July seventh, that's a Fourth of July week. Does that make sense? Should we be thinking about pushing back a week? What what's the thoughts of the group? Uh, we don't have any particular preference. Just wanted to raise the question.
I think if we're consistent and keep it the first Thursday, but I mean, it's fun.
The seventh?
Yes.
Yeah, I I'm I'm good with the seventh. I think, yeah.
Great. All right. No, no concerns there. Okay. Just wanted to raise the question and we'll stay with the seventh. That's that's fine. Um, I think Chair, that that concludes our um, Cinco de Mayo meeting, which was gracious. We appreciate your input. Um, you can all go get margaritas and tacos or burritos or whatever you want to get for Cinco de Mayo at this point.
I'm just gonna, I'm, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna throw this out there. Does anybody here or online have any more questions before we adjourn? Anybody anywhere? Okay, doesn't look like it.
Okay, um, thank you all for your time, your input, just as always, very much appreciated. And um, we will be working hard, Christine and Eunice and Nick and I getting getting ready for those. Um, the June community meetings, you'll you'll hear about those. And then we do have some follow up items. I'll be working with Jenny at Placeworks to get you an update on the housing element. And I know there's more in our notes that we need to take care of, but for now, thank you for your time. Very much appreciate it.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.